... the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Council's been provided with a revised agenda, removing item E under consent agenda. That item will be rescheduled for the March 24th meeting.
Yeah. Any motions to adopt?
Agenda?
Motion, Makay.
Second.
Second by Amanda.
Ooh, I was on this, we doctored.
All in favor. Aye. Agenda passes or is approved. No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, so open up to public comment. Commissioner Wolf, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody, Hummel, Scott County Fisher, just a couple things. We did pass the half cent sales tax for 10 more years. So that'd be, I hope that's as big a windfall as it has been, so.
Moves the vote.
It was 5-0. There was one guy that didn't maybe like it as much, but it's a lot of money, just most, not most, but over a third comes from out of the county. So I don't know if he's our rep, but if he wins this election, he would be our rep, this John Koznick. Okay? So he's talking about about the 35 and 2 bridge, if you guys heard that, but see what happens there. So whatever happened at the.
State of City.
State of City, they never, the commander said something to him, and I think that's how it was out.
Nice job, Amanda.
It might have been that comment from the Facebook Live.
Some, yeah, some group call. So then, and then on Tuesday, we're gonna do, like, we're cutting on the new building at the government, and we're mostly, everything's almost completely done, there's a couple little, you know, piece of little tile or something they got to fix up a foot down, but.
That'll be at 8:15 if anybody wants to come over. So be pretty nice, I think, we'll, you didn't have tours or whatever, so. If you have any questions, that's all I have. We should probably start to set up a time to meet again here, because you're tough to peg down.
Yeah, I think I saw May 2nd.
Oh, did you see that? I didn't see that yet.
I thought I saw Dave, but.
Okay. I look briefly, so anyhow, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else for public comment? For once, twice? All right, we'll close public comment, on to consent. Anyone have any items on the consent agenda they would like hold or discuss?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion, Makay.
Second.
Second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so on to general business, where we have one item.
So as Renee's setting up, this is the amendment to the Business and Industrial District zoning ordinance. These changes are being made to reflect the 2040 Council Plan update. This item has been reviewed at link at the planning commission level and being presented to the council tonight for consideration of adoption. Renee has presentation and questions.
Thank you, Tom. And city council, you're used to seeing amendments to the zoning ordinance typically on our consent agenda. This particular ordinance amendment is significant enough that I wanted to pull it up to consent and just talk through a couple of items and make sure that the city council is kind of aware of the magnitude of this particular amendment to the business and industrial zoning district standards, as well as some minor areas, other areas of the code, such as definitions and use standards. So again, kind of as Tom already mentioned, discussions on this topic were really initiated in response to adoption of the 2040 Conference of Plan. State statute requires that communities update their official controls, their zoning ordinances and subdivision ordinances, within nine months of adoption of the Council Plan, and the purpose of that is to make sure that your official controls match the vision, just make sure that they are not in conflict with each other. So the initial focus of the ordinance amendments was, you may recall, we have a new land use category that was created during the 2040 Conference of Plan, and that was really kind of tied to the Edelman property, or their representatives petitioning to allow some kind of lighter manufacturing warehouse, possibly distribution uses, maybe on a smaller scale on the west side of the interchange, because these smaller businesses, you know, as an example, Conrad Jorgensen, who does some manufacturing in a smaller scale, who wanted a place for these businesses to go that probably aren't going to coexist in Park I-35 on the east side of the interchange where we're envisioning very large scale industrial uses. So that is the reason that this land use category was created, and in the Conference of Plan, it does specifically state in the text that the focus is to allow limited and light uses and that there be a maximum building size, so the buildings, you know, you could have manufacturing on one side of the interstate, manufacturing on the other side of the interstate, that there's just a way to differentiate between the two. Once we started reviewing the code, we really realized that all of the business and industrial districts really needed a complete revamping altogether. Our current code was adopted in late 2006, prior, just prior to the merger of the cities. There've been minor updates, as I mentioned, but a real comprehensive update has not been completed. The focus of this was, this effort was to clarify the purpose of each of these zoning districts, review all of the allowed uses in each zoning district, both permitted and conditional uses, reduce redundancies throughout the code, there were a lot of redundancies, and then really review and update our standards related to landscaping, parking, and exterior building materials. Just an example of the redundancy that was in the code is the standards for a convenience store would appear in every single section that a convenience store was allowed. So instead of repeating five times, we took all of the standards out and put them in one spot, if that makes sense. So again, extensive research, and I'm not exaggerating when I say hundreds and hundreds of hours of research went into this effort, primarily by Haley. Site design standards, building standards, permitted and conditional uses, use standards and conditions related to specific uses, parking requirements, landscaping, as I mentioned. The primary cities that we used as a comparison for our research, Apple Valley, Belle Plaine, Farmington, Jordan, Lakeville, Lonsdale, New Prague, Prior Lake, Shakke, and Savage. So we always kind of used the six other cities in Scott County, as well as some other area communities. You know, we use Lakeville a lot, they're a large growing city, they have probably very relevant experience, they're a neighbor, Farmington, Apple Valley, they're seeing, you know, similar types of growth that we envision, so, as well as Lonsdale. So this, just gonna give you a brief overview of some meetings and discussions that took place at various planning commission meetings. Introduced this whole topic to Planning Commission in March. Back in July, we did quite a bit of research between, I'm sorry, June, between March and June of 2021. We felt as staff that we just had entirely too many commercial zoning districts, and we suggested combining a couple of them. So the B2, one of the districts was just eliminated, so the standards now related to downtown New Market and downtown Elko will be the same. There used to be two different zoning districts there, and then there was a B6 and B7 zoning district that were just so similar that we didn't really understand the difference in them, so. And that is really the primary district that will be in that new land use category that is primarily on the Edelman property. In August, we really needed to drill down on this maximum building size issue and see where the commission stood on that. We spent hours at the Planning Commission reviewing this issue and looking at different buildings throughout, in different communities, and it was apparent to staff that the Planning Commission had actually went out and driven different industrial developments that we had suggested to them in Savage and Lakeville and Apple Valley. So I was pleased, kind of coming out of that meeting, there was a consensus by the commission for what they envisioned on the west side of the interstate, buildings approximately 100,000 to 150,000 square feet. These are just examples of some of the buildings that they took a look at, they took a look at several larger buildings, but these actually were building pictures that were submitted by Jack Metasowski with APRO, and he's, has much experience in this area. So most of the buildings on this picture that you're seeing would be permitted on the west side of the interstate, with the exception on the lower left-hand corner, it's kind of the largest, it's a 286,000 square foot building. But all of these other buildings would be something that would be permissible on the west side of the interchange in that new land use designation. We continued to make some revisions, and we presented a draft ordinance at the October Planning Commission meeting. The commission did ask us to make some changes, and they were really comparing, because we always presented tables on, you know, what we were proposing versus where Lakeville and Savage and other communities were, so they asked us to reduce some of our setback requirements, which we did. We came back with the final draft ordinance in November. At that point, they directed us to prepare for a public hearing, which is required. So in December, we, at December 14th, Planning Commission meeting, we did go ahead and hold that public hearing. The commission was supportive of recommending approval at that time to the city council. Jack with APRO, who's present tonight, did request additional time to review the draft, and the commission agreed with that. So they basically continued the public hearing until their January meeting, which was about six weeks later. So Jack submitted comments, which are work in your packet, generally kind of outline some general vision and market conditions. Touched on, or requested amendments to our exterior building materials as they were being proposed, some of the use standards, some of the landscaping requirements, and petition for removal of the maximum building size in the limited light industrial, or the B6 zoning district. We, staff really did make quite a few changes to the draft ordinance, coming back to the Planning Commission. So just to touch on some of the changes that were made specifically in response to the comments received at the public hearing or in the letters following, we reduced the total landscaping requirements in all of the business and industrial zoning districts, except for the B6 district. We reduced landscaping requirements within parking lots. You see, that's just a common requirement, to have like landscape islands within commercial or industrial parking lots. We changed it to allow seed in the side and the backyard of a commercial industrial property, where previously it had been written, we're just sod would be required, and removed irrigation requirements also in the side and rear yard, which was a change to the original draft. In terms of exterior building material, I think this was a pretty big influence that we added, kind of differentiated between an architectural precast panel and a kind of a standard concrete precast panel, and allowed that architectural panel to meet some of the higher building design requirements. You know, a lot of the pictures of those other industrial buildings on the previous page, you'll see a lot of this architectural precast panel, very common, and can be attractive as well. So there were revisions made, revised the building design requirements to account for this, and this is very similar to the way Lakeville handles it. So our design requirements are basically broken down into different classes, so, you know, brick and stone is a class one material, vinyl siding is a class four material. So in the different districts, it basically identifies, you know, 25% of the building base has to be class one, or, you know, it depends on what district you're in, but that's kind of the basis of it. You have four classes of building materials. You know, on a high density residential project, we wouldn't allow a class four material. We wouldn't allow vinyl siding, we would still.
These classes are, they're not classes that we made up, they're just.
They seem to be standard in most communities, they're new to us.
They're new to us, but, okay.
Standard in many communities that we did research on.
So it's not gonna be a curveball to developers, so. It should be something that they're used to.
My opinion would be that if they've developed in communities to the north, they'd probably be familiar. And then we had some specific building material requirements specific to many storage facilities, and we basically just removed those, so they would just be subject to the standards for the underlying zoning district. I'm not gonna get into this, but this, our definitions that were added regarding where we differentiated the precast versus the standard concrete panel. There were some of the comments that staff didn't necessarily support and didn't revise. Building size was one of them. Staff brought the revised ordinance back to the Planning Commission, so staff made several revisions based on comments received, went back to the Planning Commission in January, at which time they recommended approval of this ordinance to the city council. So we are requesting that the city council adopt the ordinance containing, contains 80 pages, has been reviewed by the city attorney, along with the summary ordinance, and again, I just wanted to point out that Jack is here tonight.
First person about the conference. Thank you, Renee. Jack, how are you?
Thank you, doing well, thank you. I'm really just here to observe the final outcome, but, and say thank you for the considerations of really trying to match what your vision is and what we perceive the market to be. And you mentioned, you know, trying to raise the standard to a point of curveballs to developers or business owners, and I think, I think you've come up with a really good compromise that'll still hold a high standard for the community, but still hopefully be achievable for the, for the market in general.
So some of the, for the, for those that don't know, I met with Jack, Josh was part of those meetings, Tom, Renee, I'd met with Jack, and so all kind of came from what was being proposed and causing some, I guess, consternation with the Edelmanns, who Jack has been working closely with for a long time. So I guess my question for you is, is what's being proposed workable for you for what you're trying to do and bring to the city?
We think it's close, you know, some of the higher architectural standards on the sides and rears of the building and that type of thing, you know, I don't think it's something that can't be overcome, but, but really, when it comes down to a business owner making a decision to, to locate in Elko, New Market, or Prior Lake, or Farmington, or whatever the other, what you might call competitive locations might be, you know, those are the things that come out, you know, they wanna, they want their money to go into the business as much as possible. But I think, I think you're getting close to a really workable document.
What, what would you say is missing? When you say we're close.
I apologize, I did get a chance to get, get back to Renee, dealing with some family issues out west, but, but the architectural standards are a little on the high side, but I think they're workable. I think they're workable.
For those that don't know, Jack, very experienced developer, does anyone have, anyone else have any questions? Jack? Do you have anything else?
I sincerely appreciate the planning commission efforts and all the efforts by Renee to incorporate some of those considerations, because we sincerely aren't, aren't trying to cheapen the outcome or the product, we're just trying to match what we perceive the market to be. We think Elko, New Market is poised to explode.
The market's coming.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's here, it's coming, so we're excited to be a part of it. Thanks for all your.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions or items to discuss?
Nope.
Just go jump right to motions.
Motion to go through ordinance 244 and 235.
Motion, Makay.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right, on to reports.
I have nothing specific under administration, unless there's any questions from council.
Okay. Any public works tidbits?
Nope.
Right. Chief, it's your show.
I don't have much. We anticipate by the next council meeting, I'll have the annual report ready to do a presentation on. It's been done every year, this year, just with everything going on, Tom has it to kind of look over it quick, and so, should be done by the next meeting, looking forward to that. In my report, we've ordered some police safety gear, a new, something that's probably within the last year or so, a new ballistic protection shield, it kind of reminds me of something Captain America would have. You know, Bryce will know back in the day, and we have one, they're big, heavy shields that will stop almost any round, but they're very heavy, and they're very cumbersome, and they're hard to move, and they're not used as much, so I'm hoping by the next meeting as well, when we do our report, I'll be able to bring in those new shields, they're only 15 pounds, about 20 inches by 24 inches, you can hold them easier. We purchased three of those through our forfeiture funds, so.
Slingshot test?
It'll do a slingshot, actually, I, to try to make the officers comfortable with using them, a YouTuber called Kentucky Ballistics, I don't know if you guys know him, but he featured one of them and shot all these rounds, and it stopped everything except for the most rare, extreme handgun rounds, so they're very neat, very cool, I'm excited to get them in the squad, so the officers have them when they're out there doing their jobs, so. It's about the only new thing that we're ready for right now, so, and then I'm open for questions.
I have to say, when I first saw the picture, I'm like, that's a really weird looking cellphone. Because that's what, I mean, it looks like a cellphone.
It doesn't sit, because of the white background of the report, right, and it's a clear shield, it, you don't really get what it is, but yeah, it's, it's awesome. We're excited to get those, so.
Anyone else have questions? Anything on fire? That's a weird way of saying that.
We hope there's not.
Not currently.
So Andre and I had a meeting yesterday with the custom fire, who's providing the new tanker and new pumper truck. Welcome to the world we live in of supply chain issues. The chassis supplier for that advised them that they were moving out the delivery date by 22 months.
Sounds about right.
And so they had spoken with the chiefs, and they'd indicated that they would be acceptable, it'd be acceptable then to change the chassis to one that would be deliverable on a more reasonable timeframe, still longer, but not much longer. So you can expect probably on the next meeting or the one after that, a revised contract reflecting the changes that's.
And then, Eric?
We will be holding our first meeting with the residents of the old New Market Reconstruction Project slated for 2024, next Wednesday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM at the library. We didn't talk, Tom, about council attendees, if they would choose to, I don't think they need to come, but I don't see why they couldn't if they wanted to.
If you do plan to come, let me know tomorrow, because we would need to host it tomorrow. We, and we did, we did, I guess we did anticipate that it would be a council attended item. It's really intended to introduce the project, as you guys know, we're not at a point where we have assessment dollar amounts, we don't have design-based project dollar amounts. This is more of staying out of pure communication standpoint, to let people know that it's coming, what the scope might be, and start to build those communications.
I have a conflict, but it might end early, if it ends early, I'll be there.
Okay. Anybody else that might be interested?
I may show up, depending on what's happening down the road.
So we invited only residents that would be directly affected by the construction and/or assessments. We didn't go beyond the neighborhood or anything like that, so.
How many residents was that?
It's around 52 or something like that, 52 properties.
There's a lot of ownership, you know, multiple properties, a lot of individual ownership, so actual number of owners might be probably in the 40s, so.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Community development.
Renee, no, sorry, but the, we've received an anticipation petition, remain here in Park I-35, that would be on the next agenda. And if, the most current update on Project Horseshoe, we probably won't hear anything until they come back to visit the Twin Cities and April. That's all I have. Any questions?
Is that for sure that they're coming? That they're gonna be visiting us, or we're still waiting to hear?
I've just been told by multiple, three sources, that they'll be back in the Twin Cities in April, so.
That sounds like you're confirming. I'm kidding.
Sure, neither confirm or deny.
I'm kidding. Thank you. Anything additional for parks?
Well, that's all.
Move on. CCEC?
CCEC meets next week. Egg hunt is on April 9th. That's all I got. Is registration for that open? Yes. Okay.
All right. Other community reports, scale, I was not able to make the scale exact meeting, Tom, are you a part of it?
Yep, most of the discussion was upcoming meeting topics. That was the primary discussion.
Okay. And then scales tomorrow, anything from service delivery?
No, I reported on that at the last meeting.
MVTA?
The only thing to report was the, the February meeting, they just went over some statistics on like ride shared use, and their local demand service was like absolutely through the roof, so I found that pretty interesting. You know, rides to like the metro and stuff, or, or to downtown, were pretty much way down, non-existent, and their local ridership is like crazy, they can't keep up with their on-demand service, so I thought that was, that was interesting and a good thing for them.
Yeah.
So, that's it.
I-35, 70 hours.
Nothing other than what was sent out.
Chamber of Commerce, let's talk Chamber, I mean, we, who is representing the Chamber of Commerce?
Right now.
Um, right now, we are such a small bandwidth, there will be no presentation except for the CCEC.
Got it, okay.
That's it.
So, do we need to have this on the report items? No?
If there's something that's really drastic that needs to be talked about, I'll just bring it up at the comment at the end.
Can we take this off?
Uh, discussion by counsel, anyone have anything?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.